There you go. When I make next. Good evening, I call the order in the Westford City Council's Committee of the Whole Meeting for this evening, which is Wednesday, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the council are present except for council member Jacob, who will be, who anticipates joining us shortly. Councilmember Worthen is joining us online. We're also joined by council office staff, by Mayor Burton, his staff, and various other folks here in council chambers tonight. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started with our first discussion topic, which is the presentation of impact fee analysis and this, and study for uh three, three entities. We've got parks, police, and fire. And I believe uh uh Becky's got that.
That's right. Good evening, Council. Happy to be here tonight at this point in our um study and analysis of the impact fees. Um, we are, I've gone through this process over the last probably too, too long. Um, the previous impact fee study was done in uh May of two thousand and seventeen. So what our current impact fees are based on is from that point, and we had contracted with um Louis Young to complete an update to that impact fee analysis for us. So I just wanted to take a minute and um introduce Fred Phil Pot from, from Louis Young. He um has been working on this study for us along with some of his team. And uh he's, he, he joined Louis Young in about two thousand and six and has had a lot of diff- experience with several different cities throughout the valley, um including uh West Valley, Salt Lake, Salt Lake City, South Jordan, Orem, St. George, uh doing a lot of different analyses and um projects for, for those different entities. So but that will turn the time over to him. Yes.
I just have a question, and maybe it's better for him to answer, but I just wondered if he's had any opportunity to work with the Utah State Legislature.
That's a good question. I'll let him address that since I don't know his entire background, but I know that he's um very familiar with it, at least the impact fee law, and and he can further, further answer your question. Thank you. Yep, we'll turn the time over to him. I have one more question.
I've got another question for you, because I, I, I'm trying to get a handle on this. How much, how, so I mean, this will put you on the spot more than they, them. But how much does it cost to pay them to do this study?
That is a big question. I was not around when we did the RFP, but Denise will look that up and have an answer for you and just.
The only reason I ask is, I mean, if it's, if it's a big number, then maybe we should do it once every
six years.
But if it's not that big of a number, maybe we need to program it so that we're not making such big, yeah, you, you see where I'm going with that. Oh, here comes Denise.
And that's a, that's a good question, and I think um industry standard would, there's some of that that comes into play, but also depends a lot on the data that we have available with master plans and whatnot.
So the annual fee for this study um is seventy, almost seventy-two thousand dollars. Um however, updates are much less expensive, right? Because they've done the preliminary groundwork and they've laid the foundation. What you're doing is then you're placing inflationary factor on it and any changes like that. So um typically updates, what I've seen, and Fred, I'm not gonna look at you because I don't know for sure, like from your agency, but are somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand or so. So they're good to do every year, every two years. We should, five years is far too long. You can imagine what the cost of eggs was in two thousand and seventeen versus the cost of eggs today, five years later, six years later. It's a big difference, right? Same thing, land prices has inflated tremendously over that period of time. So we've been under collecting on our impact fees during that time period. So you should come back to your consultant and regularly update your study. Um and I think the other thing that's um a really good um pro to uh Louis Young doing this study is it's the first year that the city has a different consultant doing a study. We've typically used another consultant. Not that the work was diff- was bad or um wasn't good and supported, just very different methodology. And I think that you're gonna find the Louis Young study very easy to follow um and easy for our developers to follow and understand our methodology and easy for us to um also stand, you know, before any kind of uh appeal. So.
Counsel, if I may, furthermore, the, the cost, as you have read in the study, the cost of the study itself can be borne by the impact fees and factored into the impact fee rate as well. So it's a good idea to keep it up to date.
Any other questions for now?
I will throw out a question preemptively. Um, as we're looking at the fees, I'm wondering if it's common to not have a non-residential impact fee for parks. If we're an outlier there, if it's standard to not have that, I've got a lot of questions around that. So just be, just know that that's coming.
Yeah, I'm sure he'd be happy to address that specifically and whatever other questions you have. I guess I should point out, clarify too, that uh your organization has, there's a, I don't know, has recently had a name change, but it is now LRB Public Financial Advisors. So just for, for awareness sake, we'll, we'll give Fred the, the, the mic and whatever questions you might have. We're, we're here to help answer questions.
Is this uh for my presentation? Or is this aged pipe? I guess it relates to impact fees in some regard, but uh thank you for letting me uh come this evening. We've uh already started off with some questions, which is a great thing. Uh if you have additional questions as I go through the presentation, feel free to, to chime in. Uh this being a work session, I'll address anything that, that comes up as I progress through, through this. Uh as uh Becky indicated, um we're now LRB Public Finance Advisors. Uh we were Louis Young Robertson in Burningham. Uh so I, I fully expect that name change is gonna take a, a while to adjust to, but um we're happy to, to participate in the study and we're going to talk about, I'm going to talk about the Parks Impact Fee and Public Safety, both policing and fire.
Alan, I'm gonna interrupt here. Can we just grab a table and set up a table here and then have him sit here instead of having to stand there for the? Oh, I can do it. I can move a table. Hold on just a sec.
Sure.
We'll put a table here and you can sit and we, that mic will move. We can.
Sure. Yeah.
Hey Derek, I loved your report, by the way. It's good. No, this is just interruption. He might as, I, I'm just sitting, I, I'm sitting, I'm seeing you stand up there and it's like, God, that looks uncomfortable. He's gonna be, he's gonna be doing this for how long? No.
Well, now, now I feel a little bit like a congressional hearing or something, you know, sitting in front of, yes, okay, that's, I'll hold you to that. Um, with regards to your question on legislative involvement, uh we do not um actively participate in legislative uh policy or lobbying or anything like that. Um, we do work with the Utah League of Cities and Towns uh regarding uh specific um topics like impact fees or other uh elements with regards to housing. Uh we're currently engaged with the Utah League of Cities and Towns to work through and uh some of those topics and provide data and analysis for them to then uh represent municipalities uh at the legislature. Uh we also will attend legislative sessions, those types of things, to make sure we're up to date on uh topics, but again, we're not as active in lobbying from that perspective. Alrighty, uh with regards to the impact fee process, Becky indicated we work with, uh LRB works with several entities across the state. Uh I've worked with several entities in my uh fifteen-plus years with, with LRB and um from small communities to large communities and, and working through methodologies and establishing impact fees. And our approach is to provide a, a defensible methodology with regards to any impact fee that we calculate and ensure that we're calculating the maximum allowable impact fee. We have to ensure that we um comply with statutory requirements as it relates to the impact fees. And over the years, that, uh the Impact Fee Act has been adjusted and um changed over time to reflect the uh different factors that influence the calculation or the development community. Uh we had substantial changes in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and thirteen and minor changes in subsequent years uh relative to the Impact Fee Act. The major elements that we need to consider when evaluating impact fees is what's called an impact fee facilities plan and then the impact fee analysis or proportionate share analysis. The impact fee facilities plan, there are specific requirements, and I'll point those out in a future slide with regards to uh the impact fee facilities plan. But there are steps that we need to go through in order to have a defensible impact fee facilities plan. All of that information then feeds into the impact fee analysis or proportionate share analysis, which is simply a process of division. What we're doing is taking all of those cost assumptions and dividing it equitably be- between existing and future development to ensure that future development pays a proportionate or fair uh impact fee relative to their uh impact on your system, the different variables that we evaluate. Within the statute, there is not a requirement regarding how often these should be updated. So um if someone asks you when you need to update an impact fee study, the answer is it depends. Uh depends on the assumptions in the study, uh whether those assumptions are still valid. Changes in environmental factors or um your uh development pro forma, so looking at growth and how that fluctuates from year to year. Um variables like inflation will impact whether a study should be updated more regularly or not. Uh so those uh factors or assumptions that feed into the report are the triggers that would necessitate an update, either uh frequently or infrequently. Um, there is a requirement within the statute that impact fees uh are expended within six years from the date they're collected. And often that requirement is used as a, an indirect reference to say how often we should update the studies. It's also a reference on, on the timing horizon of these types of studies, but again, there isn't a statutory requirement on how often those should be updated. Typically, they are updated every three to five years, but entities will update them more frequently as the um assumptions change. So over the last several years, inflation has, has out, uh outpaced historic averages and entities have updated their studies more frequently to account for those inflationary changes. Um, as Denise indicated, uh the amendment process or, or update process is typically uh faster and cheaper. So some entities will opt to update those frequently to, to stay ahead of that uh assumption curve and to potentially save a little bit on the uh annual cost for these types of studies. Uh again, as we go back to the requirements, the statute requires that we have an impact fee facilities plan, uh which identifies the um the key variables that feed into the process, and then we follow that with an impact fee analysis or a proportionate share analysis. We uh jump to the next slide. Uh this will highlight the process, the general process with regards to uh impact fees and adoption. Uh we have to start the process with a notice of intent that allows development, the development community to know that we're going to update your uh documentation. We then go through the preparation of the IFFP and IFA and the certification of those documents. We then review that with staff and make changes as needed based on their input. Uh we, we, we collaborate with staff through the whole process uh as we collect data and process that data. And then when we have the final document, we uh, we go through that revision process with them. Uh, there's an optional uh discussion with stakeholders. It's not required that we reach out to stakeholders other than the noticing requirements found in the statute relative to pre-noticing and noticing for public hearing. Some entities choose to uh have uh stakeholder workshops and, and reach out to the development community separately um to, to get input. That is not required by the statute. Uh, once we have the documents uh completed in draft format, then we go into a adoption phase, which typically includes a work session. That is not required either, um but most entities like to have a work session to work through the details. Then we prepare for public hearing by completing the appropriate noticing. Uh that has been simplified in, in past years. Um, when I first started doing impact fees, there was quite a bit more noticing that was required, uh but they have simplified that and um uh but there are still some public hearing noticing requirements that we have to go through. Uh then, when noticing is complete, then you are able to hold a public hearing, at which point you can adopt, modify, or reject the impact fees. If you adopt anything higher than what you currently assess, there's a ninety-day wait period um before those fees become effective. The statute actually indicates that if you change the impact fees, then there's a ninety-day wait period. But by practice, if the fees go down, those are adopted immediately. Most entities put that into place immediately. Uh if there's an increase, then there, that ninety-day wait period becomes effective. Uh the reason why we do that is um if there's a decrease, then a developer could come in and say, hey, we want you to adjust the current fee to the new fee and what they would hand you our study as the justification for the decrease in the fee. So.
Oh, so can we do that with them for the, with increase?
No, that ninety-day wait period, that's, that's a little bit of a, it's a, yeah.
Oh, so only one way. Well, that should be fixed legislatively. That doesn't seem right.
Yeah, so uh I, I would agree that um, you know, if, if there's a concern with regards to development pro forma, then there should also be a concern with regards to the municipalities pro forma relative to uh funding infrastructure. Um, with uh legislative change, I'll just kind of, just uh fo- uh something to think about relative to uh the impact fee statute. Um, what, what I've noticed is anytime we try to open this up, uh there, there's challenges uh associated with that. And um it, it's a definitely a piece of legislation that is a hot-button issue. And so anytime it gets opened up, there's some unintended consequences as a result of change. Um, so from a, a consultant's perspective, I, I, I don't like to see impact fees come up. Um, uh but often there's a need.
That's how PTA feels about school trust lands.
Yes.
Just so you know, same feeling.
Yeah. Uh, but uh again, this is the general process that we go through with regards to impact fees. Um, we're at the tail end now, looking at uh the work session and the adoption process and make sure that we can complete that.
Okay, so I have a question. So we're in, we're on this process where we're doing the, the work session, right? Yes, so, and, and I noticed that our, our document is all stamped draft.
Yes.
So at some point in time, i- i- is that at the, the public hearing phase? Or when we enact it, is that where we make this study final?
Correct. So we typically keep, keep the draft watermark on there until adoption of the impact fee enactment or ordinance. So you as a legislative body have ability to make recommendations and uh that may influence the, the study up until that adoption of the enactment. Um, and we, we don't like uh that to happen uh just for the purposes of make sure that we have a, a, a defensible product for you. But there are instances where um there may be some, some uh recommendations with regards to the data or the schedule itself that we can then um have the ability to make those changes up until that final public hearing. Alrighty, so um the next couple of slides, we're gonna now talk about timeline. Yes.
Sorry, quick question on that. What's the timeline required for noticing? I'm assuming if we all say, you know what, we're really happy with everything. We can't have the public hearing like our next city council meeting next week, right? There's gotta be.
There's a ten-day notice period. So we have to have all noticing uh at le- at least ten days in advance of the public hearing. Uh what is required uh as part of the noticing is um a certain language to be um put on the Utah Public Notice website and within three public locations. We also have to have the documentation, the IFFP and IFA, as well as the draft impact fee ordinance. So legal will need to have a draft document that can also be made available to the public. All of that has to be available ten days in advance of the public hearing. So with regards to timeline, uh as uh was alluded to um by Becky and Denise, the impact fees were last updated in two thousand and seventeen. Uh and then LRB was engaged to uh update and revise that, that study and um utilize uh our methodologies relative to the impact fee calculation. Um, so we're engaged in that process and um we'll be presenting the findings of the parks, recreation and public safety this evening with future IFFPs and IFAs uh presented at a future council meeting. Okay, so now into the details uh regarding the IFFP, IFFP and IFA process. Again, IFFP stands for Impact Fee Facilities Plan and the IFA is the Impact Fee Analysis. The statute includes the acronym Impact Fee Facilities Plan. It doesn't necessarily, it does not include the acronym IFA. It talks about a proportionate share analysis and the calculation of impact fees. We uh use that acronym Impact Fee Analysis to, to simplify that. Um, the statute identifies uh the elements, as I mentioned, the elements that are required as part of the Impact Fee Facilities Plan. And I've summarized them into these six main components. Whenever I do an impact fee study, I will address these elements. Now, how they're addressed and um the assumptions that go into each one of these steps is different for the services that we look at. But every study will include these six elements. And understanding that helps as you process the different studies that we'll look at. Um, the first element that we need to look at is determined demand. Uh what is the current demand? What is the projected demand as we look forward into the future? Uh how is that going to change? And what are the different demand variables that we look at? For parks and recreation and public safety, uh we typically look at population and calls for service. Whereas uh other services like transportation will look at trip generation on your road infrastructure. So the demand variable differs for each service, but the, the first step is to evaluate that demand. Then we look at providing an inventory of existing facilities. So what infrastructure do you have in place now to serve existing and future residents? The Impact Fee Act requires that when we evaluate existing facilities, that we uh use the original cost of that infrastructure. If there's any cost evaluation associated with the impact fee. So we can't use a depreciated replacement or, or an inflated cost. We have to use the original cost of that infrastructure. Now, we'll also evaluate in addition to the original investment. If there's additional investment to maintain that infrastructure, sorry, not to maintain it, but to uh uh preserve that infrastructure over time to ensure that it uh is available to both existing and future residents as we move forward. So often there's capital investment that's needed to invest in existing infrastructure, uh to keep it relevant and useful to uh, to development. We will also consider that, that cost. Again, we can't inflate all of that investment and put it in today's dollars or future dollars. We have to use what you invested at the time of investment. Uh sorry, if you, if you jump back, um uh the third step is looking at a level of service, both existing and, and future or proposed levels of service. This is a key component when evaluating impact fees is establishing a level of service and why impact fees for communities differ. Every community is different relative to your level of service and what you offer and provide. And uh that needs to be the consideration when, when determining impact fees and tip, not typically a comparison of surrounding communities. Otherwise, there's a sacrifice of level of service potentially if you start making comparisons to other communities. I recognize that that often happens, that we make comparisons, but this is really why uh impact fees are set at the level they are is it's based on levels of service and what you provide your residents. The Impact Fee Act requires that uh impact fees um only be assessed to maintain the existing level of service and not increase the level of service unless uh you identify another funding mechanism to increase the level of service for your existing residents to bring everybody up to that same uh same watermark. Um, the level of service valuation is different again for every service that we evaluated, evaluated and is often tied to the demand variable and how we evaluate demand. Um, but again, that, defining that level of service is key for the impact fee process. Once we have those three variables, demand, existing facilities, and level of service, we then evaluate the existing and future capital facilities needed to serve new development. So um based on that existing facility inventory, we may say, we have some excess capacity in our infrastructure that can benefit new development. In essence, we've invested, pre-invested in infrastructure that now can benefit the growth that we anticipate into the future. Well, the impact fee allows us to capture that investment that you've already made and require new development to pay back for that. Uh pay existing residents back for that investment that's been made. What that is referred to uh in impact fee jargon is, is a buy-in component. So new development is buying into the uh infrastructure that you've already constructed and helping pay, pay back that, that investment. Where that is insufficient or limited, we then look to future facilities and the construction of future facilities to bridge the gap for the level of service and the demand variable. So the impact fee often includes an averaging of those two variables. Your uh buy-in or existing facility inventory uh or excess capacity and the future facility, bringing both those together to then serve new development. That averaging is what uh feeds into the proportionate share analysis. It's also important to understand that because um, again, going back to levels of service and how communities differ. Um, one entity may have a lot of excess capacity, which will typically result in a lower fee. Because again, we have to include the original value or historic dollars when calculating the fee, which pulls that average down versus a community that has uh no excess capacity and we're constructing all new facilities, the impact fee is going to be weighted towards future cost or inflated cost to build that infrastructure. So that relationship also influences impact fees and the, the maximum impact fee for a community. So uh again, it's um, we, we need to be cautious when we make comparisons because one community may be averaged towards buy-in, whereas uh West Jordan needs to build new infrastructure, which is going to push the impact fee up. Um, but that averaging is important when we consider impact fees, and I'll show you what that looks like when, when we talk about uh public safety. Alright, once we get through those four steps, then we need to look at the, the last two elements, which is the consideration of all revenue resources to finance system improvements. That's both existing and future. So what that looks like is if there's outstanding debt or the need for future debt, we can include the interest costs associated with that. If there are alternative funding mechanisms from uh other government entities like a regional transportation uh entity, uh WFRC, um if there's dollars being funneled in to the community from outside entities, then we need to look at that as a revenue resource that would potentially offset uh future capital costs. So looking at all those different revenue streams uh and ensuring that the impact fee accounts for that is the fifth step. And then those five steps feed into that sixth element, which is the proportionate share analysis. Yes.
On, on number five, is it, is it just existing finances that can come in? Or would they include like kids and lids and whatever other? Are they including those as well?
Yes, so any future um financing strategy should also be considered. For example, if.
Even if they may never be used, you still consider them?
Well, uh what we do is consider um future financing that is reasonable and expected. So if we're not going to include um hypotheticals that maybe this is going to happen. So if we're not going to include um hypotheticals that maybe this is going to happen. Um we try to focus it on what we think is going to happen reasonably and uh recognizing that if that changes, then the impact fee should be adjusted. So that would be a variable that could trigger an adjustment uh sooner than the five-year uh average of of making adjustments to impact fees. We may say uh previously, we assumed uh the city was going to fund all of this infrastructure. Now, we have a PID or some other sort of finance financing mechanism. We need to reevaluate this, recalculate the fee and produce a new uh new proportionate share calculation. Yes. Alrighty, so again, all of the those first five steps feed into that proportionate share analysis. Uh the the simplest way for me to think about is again, simple division. We're dividing all of those assumptions to ensure that it's a fair fee uh and and equitable fee for new development relative to all of those requirements in the Impact Fee Act. Alrighty, so the next couple of slides, we're going to dive into some of the details associated with those six steps for Parks and Recreation and Public Safety. So uh the service area that we look at when determining demand is the entire municipalities. We're not looking at separate service areas. The Impact Fee Act allows us to uh consider separate service areas. Um most entities within the state of Utah establish a single citywide service area uh for uh ease of administration and really equity across the service area. It's often very difficult to parse out a system, uh take a water system or public safety to parse that out and say, well, this component or this station only benefits this geographic area. There's there's a mutual benefit benefit to the entire service area. And so we try to preserve that. There are some instances where a separate service area is warranted. Uh an example is your neighbor, South Jordan. They have the Daybreak uh Community. And uh there are certain developer agreements related to that area that necessitate a separate service area. And so we've worked with them through that uh in determining the impact fees for those service areas. In this instance, we have a a citywide service area. We're not uh contemplating uh separating any uh unique service areas. When we look at demand for uh the services that we're addressing tonight for Parks, Recreation and Public Safety, we're looking at population growth and um calls for service. So we've evaluated fire calls and police calls and made projections with regards to that. I'll point out that these are are just that, projections, and often they change. This is another key variable that if um for example, there were recession and and growth slows substantially, entities will update their studies to account for changes in growth assumptions. Conversely, if there's a boom period, which which uh we've seen happen, um impact fees are adjusted to account for that as well. So growth assumptions uh and the change of those assumptions are a trigger for update.
And and how did you get the police and fire calls where what data did you use to determine the increases?
Yeah, so what we looked at is um growth and residential and commercial development and perpetuating that, saying, okay, what have we seen historically? And let's make projections with regards to that moving forward. Uh the base call data uh came from uh City Informations. We got uh prior year calls for service and evaluated that based on specific land uses within the city. So we geocoded those calls for service and and evaluated those.
Do we, do you factor in any cultural ish issues, any cultural factors? I I know that recently I had a conversation with an officer in our city and he confirmed kind of my hunch that that um things are not getting better where we'll need less service. But it's uh we we're requiring more service than we did even five years ago and that it's getting a little bit trickier.
Yeah, so we do evaluate um environmental factors or cultural factors uh to some degree. Uh for example, the um the COVID pandemic influenced a lot of call data. And so we evaluated that by removing some historic data and saying, okay, is this really representative of what the call volume would would look like? Or is, do we need to make adjustments? But the element that you're talking about, which is the tendency for levels of service to increase over time, really is captured in regular updates to the study. So the the act requires that we establish your existing level of service, which is what we need to do. And then as that changes, future updates will capture those changes in level of service.
So since Councilmember Whitelock kind of opened the can of worms, I wanna jump in and see how far I can throw this. Um yeah, one of my concerns, like with with fire calls for service, I think is a reasonable measurement. Uh I'd also, I I'm sure this isn't industry standard, but average time per call to see how that's changing as well. Because as um changes were made to process, uh for example, if there's somebody who has a cardiac issue, it used to be that you would try and take them as quickly as you could to the hospital, but now they stay and try and do as much care on scene. So I'm curious, are we seeing the exact same number of calls, but we're spending more time there? Because if we're seeing the same number of calls, the study might mistakenly suggest that we don't need any additional resources when the reality is that we're spending more time. With police, I'm a little concerned about the the calls for service as well. Um time per call, I don't know if that's a good representation. I'd also worry about uh the caseload that they have and the complexity of the call as well. Um and the number, I mean, we may have one call, but we may have seven officers responding to it. Um our chief has mentioned that if there's, I haven't prepared a homicide in our city, that's an instant check for thirty thousand dollars. Um just a few hours, so. I want a feeling of reassurance that some of the nuance is captured in these measurements because there are very significant cost drivers behind the scene that could be easily overlooked if it's oversimplified. And 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 where Councilmember Whitelock's talking about some of the different issues that we run into, those were the things that first came to my mind. So is there's, i- is it is it just strictly the simple calls for service or is there more behind that?
Right now, it's the calls for service, but some of those elements are baked into that variable. Meaning, when we establish the level of service now, it assumes the response time and um uh caseload that is currently processed with the number of officers that you have and the call volume that is processed each year. What you're talking about is also a change over time, that uh as you look into the future, that could get better or worse. In most cases, the uh the time requirement and operation uh cost associated with processing calls gets more pronounced, meaning we need more resources to handle uh the calls that that get processed. That's difficult for us to capture based on the requirement that we evaluate your current level of service and perpetuate that. Often, what entities will do is uh uh outside of the impact fee process, make some evaluations regarding um long-term impacts relative to time, response time, caseload and determine uh the impacts on FTEs and administrative budgets. Then back that into um capital cost impacts and make a determination of how much of that needs to be addressed with general fund monies and other revenues outside of impact fees. And then how much of that can we capture with impact fees? Cause there's a little bit of a double-edged sword there, which is um how much of that is impacted by existing call volumes and uh uh existing resources and how do we need to expand those? And how much of that impacts future resources and growth-related infrastructure? But uh we evaluated to say, okay, what is our level of service now, assuming those variables with regards to response time and caseload? And perpetuate that. And that's all this is doing, is a perpetuation of your existing level of service. It's likely that those will change over time, which is again, why impact fees should be updated more regularly rather than less uh less often.
I I'm sitting here thinking, and I know it's dangerous when I think. But I I agree with the fact that we need to look at at some point in time as we as we do updates, obviously, this is the, this is a baseline. But we need to look at the complexity of the call. Um I mean, even fire, even fire department calls. I mean, I'm gonna use an example. Uh Chief Maxwell sent out a great report on the fireworks responses. Well, there were a couple of responses that they responded to a fire, that by the time they got there, there was no fire. The fire was put out. Well, that call is significant, I mean, it's it's a call, but it's significantly less of a call than like the call that we had a couple of years ago when the airplane ended up crashing into a house. And so somehow, and 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 Denise, I'm I'm throwing you under the bus here. Um this is one of the, this this is something that I really like the idea of even this demand analysis as a baseline. So that over the course of updates, we can start to figure out how to even on even on non-impact fee basis, how we can better fund the police, how we can better fund fire, how we can better fund parks. Because we have some baseline data and we see the delta in those baseline data. And and I think that, so I'm just suggesting to to staff that as we as we have this demand analysis report, this baseline report, that we use that and that we update this, dang, I don't wanna say we don't update it yearly. Um that we update this yearly so that we can have these kinds of demands and and see what's happening with the city, so that we can actually better decide how to, if there's a better way to fund police and fire, or if there's additional money or additional money for parks and those kind of, does that make sense?
Thank you. One element I wanted to point out with regards to the impact fee process is uh there's a delicate balance between specificity and ambiguity in these types of reports. And the the reason why that's important when thinking about it from a legislative perspective is impact fees can and will be challenged with regards to whatever information is put into a study. So the more specific um we are, the more um ability there can be to say, hey, you said this was going to happen, but it didn't. And now we we s- we want to say your impact fee, we're going to say your impact fee is invalid as a result of that. Now, uh municipalities and entities are protected in that um as long as it's reasonable at the time, then there's protection there. And development is really only entitled to a difference between what the impact fee was and what it should have been. So this, if there's an argument to say, hey, you, this is incorrect, well, then we recalculate it based on uh that information and and determine if there's any change. Uh often, um it's rolling the dice uh with regards to some of the developer uh challenges relative to if it's going to go down or up. And that's where we come in and help to evaluate that. But um uh what what we do as consultants is is try to establish a methodology that complies with the statute while um protecting the city with regards to future challenges uh if we're too specific. So we want to, we want to create some ability for you as a as a community to have a document that doesn't necessarily have to be updated every year because it's so specific, but gives you enough specificity that we can say, yes, it's defensible and reasonable relative to the assumption assumptions that we've made, recognizing that it will get updated at at a future point to account for changes. So uh I just bring that up for you as a legislative body to think about as you are noodling over impact fees and and that concept of specificity.
I've got a specific question, but I'm gonna wait till we get to fire.
Okay.
It's methodology, so anyway, I'll I'll, not to drive things to product now, thank you, best. Sorry about that, but thank you for diving into the questions.
Yeah. Um alright, so with regards to level of service, um for parks, we're looking at a value per capita. That is an important element um when we talk about specificity and flexibility. For parks and recreation, we're trying to create a little more flexibility in our methodology because parks and recreation infrastructure often changes from year to year, especially as you look at the types of amenities that constructed, that get constructed. So we're, we've established a a level of service that's based on promoting some more flexibility and the expenditure of impact fees. For public safety, we're looking at calls per unit, either households or building square footage for non-residential development. We express that on a per thousand square foot basis in the fee calculation. Uh so those are the level of service variables that we're evaluating and how we calculate that for the different uh services. Alrighty, so uh with regards to the existing facilities, um here for Parks and Recreation, we've looked at uh traditional park acreage and improvements on that uh on park facilities. And we've looked at the trail space and the uh improvement value for uh trails. So um here again, what we're trying to capture, what we have captured in the calculation, the impact fee, is what is the level of investment that you have made uh in parks and trails uh for your existing residents? And that is the basis for the level of service and the impact fee calculation. So we're aggregating all of that up into a um a level of investment per capita or value per capita. Uh in order to do that, we take acreage uh and land value and improvement value. We calculate that in today's dollars and say, here is the value that that has been provided to existing residents. Uh we call that the level of investment approach, so you'll see that in the report. For public safety, we're looking at actual facilities and apparatus uh for both police and fire. It's important to note that the Impact Fee Act required or allows us to include uh equipment uh or apparatus for fire only, and it has to be apparatus over five hundred thousand dollars in value. And it can only be assessed to non-residential development uh when calculating the fee.
I'm at that can only be assessed to non-residential?
Yes, yeah. So we cannot look at allocating apparatus to, based on the statute to to residential.
So when we have a multifamily development, is that considered commerc-? I mean, it's residential, I would assume, right?
Y- y- yes, in in most cases, this is where there's some gray area of how you actually classify. Um.
So so where my brain's going with this one? We have trying to make things more affordable as the state legislature keeps pushing, which leads to higher density, which leads to very compact multifamily residential units, which leads to us having to purchase equipment like a tiller truck that is double, if not more, the expense of a of a of a regular fire truck. But the cost of that to service the residential uh development can only be charged back to non-residential.
Correct.
I'm assuming that the logic in that is something that was derived by the state legislature. I'm seeing Mr. Lee's light go on.
Just chuckling, cause I had this exact conversation with Brad only uh forty minutes ago. Yeah, yes, it's frustrating uh because very much so residential fire uh response requires apparatus that is often more expensive, in fact, usually far more expensive than half a million dollars.
Yes.
Half a million dollars, I think, gets us an oil change.
Yeah, so that, yeah, definitely a part of the statutory change uh in past years. But uh this is again, one of those elements that we say, okay, do we, you know, and and we stay out of that, that whole legislative discussion. But um you know, do we open up the impact fees, impact fee statute and look for change? Um if so, what are the unintended consequences as a result of that? Um I've had other communities that I've worked with that have, you know, looked at some of these elements where the Impact Fee Act just doesn't quite work for um municipalities and local entities um on a transportation side. Uh for example, um some larger entities, populous cities that that uh have different transportation needs uh like um um alternative modes of transportation to meet demand are not clearly spelled out in the Impact Fee Act. So uh bus rapid transit or pedestrian-related infrastructure, um uh public transit-related infrastructure, all of those variables are not clearly spelled out in the statute and become a gray area.
I'm gonna have questions on that, but when it's the park side.
Um yes.
I'll I'll just throw it out now. Seeing no, nothing, and I'm not seeing other cities that have a non-commercial park impact fee, but I'm looking at our transit uh like our transit stops. And I'm seeing a lot of people um who walk from the Gardner Village Station over to Zion's Bank. Or I'm seeing a lot of folks who are by uh Bingham Junction walking to the businesses there. I know that that's managed by our Parks Group, but the businesses that would likely locate there because of some of the park and trail infrastructure are not being charged for that. It's just residential and that's, oh, oh. That's the question, when you get to the park stuff, you can.
Yes, and and we can talk about that generally now, but um it's we're talking about existing facilities. But uh within Utah, there is, there's not a standard of practice to assess a park impact fee to non-residential development. However.
And nobody else is doing it? And nobody else is doing it, but nobody's really challenged it?
Yeah, correct, nobody's really doing it, and there hasn't been a push, now I've had some communities. With that question, say, hey, should we look at that? And the uh questions that arises, how do we evaluate? Demand of of how are um non-residential. Business or non-residential development causing a a growth uh or impact on your park infrastructure, and so it's. Uh taking a a step backwards and saying, okay, what are? What what sort of study can we conduct to evaluate the impacts? Of uh non-residential development on our parks and recreation, then use that to help support. The calculation of the fee on non-residential, recognizing that it's not a standard across the state, so. What we really look at is saying, okay, if it's not a standard, is there going to be questions that arise from? The fact that West Jordan assesses the fee on that non-residential development, and if so, then do we have the data to back up? The demand variable associated with the justification of that, that fee assessment, so. Uh and a city that I've worked with, St. George, they had this question.
As I say, I don't think St. George had any park impact fees at all, it's not that I can find.
They do have park impact fees, uh it is assessed to residential development. But it it is not yet assessed to non-residential, but they are. Uh interested in uh establishing a nexus between non-residential and residential. Or sorry, non-residential and the impact fee. The uh the way your current study does that is um. Is somewhat convoluted relative to just an allocation of. Time, in essence, that basically there's an evaluation of residential time based on residents. Working and not working and jobs within the community and assumption of time spent in the community, and we're saying, okay. Uh essentially, they have access to uh park infrastructure, whether they use it or not. And and we're going to allocate proportionally based on that variable. Um I do see some states uh uh outside of Utah employ the same methodology, and that's because. Tischler and Raftless um. Uh consultants that often do impact fee studies employ the same methodology, it's just not a standard utilized in Utah as much, and so. Again, if if we're to look at that, there there could be approached to apply that. But it's it's the defensibility behind that and the fact that not many entities across the state. Assess that, so there's a little bit of hesitation on my part, and as we discussed with staff. Um relative to that because of those variables or those those um. Those elements that we just discussed. Often, the the result of applying the methodology that your twenty seventeen study. Utilizes, it's it's somewhat de minimis, with regards to. What can be attributed to non-residential development on a per thousand square foot basis? Because of the um the larger impact from just your residential. Demand variable and time spent within the community, so. Um those are the discussions we've had internally. Um again, we can take direction at to say, hey, no, we wanna employ the the methodology and and. And keep that in there, then we could, we could do that, recognizing that there's some potential risk associated with that. Uh that we wanna uh address with with future studies potentially, so.
So is the risk just to that portion of the study?
Yes. To the whole. Just the allocation, again, the standard of practice across the state is typically not to assess a park impact fee to non-residential development. Um but th- that's unique to parks and recreation.
Thank you.
It's not uh in any of the other services that we look at. Uh with that said, Chris, that the, that there is that discussion of, you know, what what are the impacts from? Uh non-residential development, especially as you look at office space and utilization. Albeit small potentially, but there is a potential utilization of park space. For example, I know uh I, at, this is. Uh a survey of one, but I, our offices are at the Gateway uh offices in Salt Lake, and I have. Left the Gateway and met my family on rare occasion, but we've gone to some parks and. They have other factors that have prohibited us or limited our use of park space, but. That happens, right, that that I've gone and used some of the park space.
Yeah, Jordan River Trail, seventy-two hundred South, Bingham Junction, you've got IMC, that's very. Much encouraging folks to get out, you see them on the trail all the time, FL Smith, right there, connects right to their offices, the parks, not, you see a lot of folks that are.
Yes.
Granted, that's on the other side of the river, but. We end up paying for the infrastructure, granted, at this point, it's maintenance, but as we're looking at some of these stationary plans. As we're talking about, okay, what's future potential development around some of these uh transportation hubs? There's a large commercial component, even if we look directly across the street from us right here at the city center.
Yes.
Um if we were to do something residential, yes, would be a portion. But we're gonna be touting to any commercial developer access to tracks, which is access to the airport and. That's those those trails that are intended to interconnect everything are going to be a large part of what we use to sell them, and I'm. I'm assuming a good part of the reason why they come.
Uh yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Lee, I see your light again.
Yeah, Mr. Chef, I may uh just add two cents here, the idea of. The idea of of trails connecting commercial areas either to transit or um. Providing commercial properties, a uh non-vehicular means to get their employees to and from. To and from work is is a really good one, and it may be something where we want to look carefully in the future at. Specified areas, districts that have an uh a separate trail impact fee that is applied to commercial properties. As Fred's been mentioning, though, the the real trick is the study and the defensibility of the apportionment of the impact. So I.
That's that's the rub, that's the challenge.
Yeah, I I think I've shared more than enough of my thoughts and the direction of my thinking on this matter, I don't wanna derail the meeting too much, but. I al- well, I also don't think this is something that we could change course on before we, and I wouldn't wanna delay the adoption of updated in. Uh impact fees for this one. However, Mayor, if you're minimal to it, I'm wondering if this is something that we might approach the league with and see if this is something that the league. Uh might be willing to to help take up, obviously, this is much larger than us. But that that's probably the better place to actually have an impact with the conversation rather than with just the small group here tonight.
That that's a good suggestion, but I also note that there's a lot of money that's coming for transportation. This region is connected, that we could get, there would be grants given to us, that would. Be able to provide that, even if we don't have impact fees for it.
If the legislature wants to make those sources of funding permanent, because like we saw, like was discussed earlier, they look at all the different sources of funding, but if that's just temporary. Then maybe, may maybe pushing for something permanent, like the ability for. Impact fees for parks, non-commercial, because the legislature is very loudly pushing for walkable communities that. Integrate residential with commercial, and it it seems appropriate, it seems overdue.
Good points, thank you.
Councilmember Green.
I like the, I like the idea of somehow. And so I think this is the the discussion that you we're having here with. Exploring particularly along the idea of the trail impact fee. I just assumed have a whole transportation impact fee, but that's a different story that nobody's gonna let us have. But the one, the one thing that we need to to keep in mind and. Is as we look at commercial building in the city. One of the, one of the things that they always look at, a lot of businesses always look at is amenities. And and so my question, my my statement question would be more along the lines that. Uh I like the trails, you know, because we're trying to do more mixed use, particularly on stationary plans, and we see those. That the active, you know, the active transportation, those kind of things. But we, I think we need to make sure that. We have the right balance so that. It doesn't look like we're trying to overly. Make the business community be the ones involved in the trail system, and it chases them. That becomes a decision that they don't wanna relocate in a city because those costs may be too high. So I think we, you know, we just have to look at that balance, but I think it's a discussion that we need to explore.
Uh going back again to the um. The fifth step, which is the consideration of all revenue sources, uh some entities will look at. This um. The non-residential impacts through alternative mechanisms like developer agreements um to help. With the construction of infrastructure within a specific. Uh project area, so there are other tools that some entities will look at to to um. Uh incentivize or stimulate some of that investment, but you're right that. As it relates to transportation and parks and recreation, there's some ambiguity there that um creates some. Challenge associated with determining a fee.
So now I'm gonna ask the question since you brought it up. If developer agreements allow, are are one of these alternative revenue sources for. Uh for for like non-residential um impacts. What others, what other devices are there? Besides the developer agreement, and then off the top of my head, I can think of a P I D. Uh what, besides, besides developer agreements and P I Ds. What other devices are there for non-residential? Sources of funding or whatever we call that for the.
Yeah.
Those impacts.
Well, uh developer agreements can be can be utilized for residential and non-residential, and many of the tools can be used uh to just. Uh stimulate development in general and new growth, but you have the P I Ds, public infrastructure districts, special assessment areas, special improvement districts. Tax increment financing, uh which is the creation of uh community reinvestment areas. Uh general uh alternative funding mechanisms from other government entities that can be utilized, debt funding. Uh your existing resources and general fund monies or utility revenues uh are options that can be utilized. We've seen a lot of investment historically with CARES money, you know, so that that's an example of another government entity providing. Uh monies, so there are many tools, but some of them are specific, uh and there are often. Policies in place, um West Jordan has policies relative to many of those tools. Many entities across the state adopt policies relative to the utilization of those tools because they have. A specific utility and um there are specific cases where they're beneficial and other cases where they're not beneficial to utilize those those tools, so. We typically, uh the Impact Fiat or the Impact Fee Analysis is limited to the calculation, the Impact Fee. We do highlight some of the alternative re- uh revenue resources, but we focus on identifying. Those that are known and reasonable, um if it's uh hypothetical or unknown, we don't, we don't bring that into the analysis and. Uh that is again, for future uh iteration of the study, once those become known variables, then they'll be brought into the study. And the fee will be just adjusted accordingly. Yeah, I wanna be sensitive to time, I'm not exactly sure when we wanna be done, I know this was the only, I think this is the only discussion item this evening. So I'll kinda look to you, if I'm getting too long-winded, you can tell me to hurry up, or. Uh I'll spend as much time as you want with your questions and going through the the information. Alrighty, so with regards to future needs, uh we then uh take all of those variables that we've discussed thus far, the demand. Existing facilities, the level of service. Um and determine what new facilities are needed based on the level of service. So for parks and recreation, our level of service is the value per capita, we take that value and make projections based on. Population growth and determine what sort of future investment is required. Again, this allows quite a bit of flexibility, because we're not saying necessarily the city has to build ten pickleball courts or fifteen basketball courts, although. It's likely that some of those may be constructed, we're saying. The city needs to invest a certain amount per capita as we look into the future to maintain the same level of service. How you choose to invest that is uh identified, uh we we. Clarify that to some degree in the Impact Fee Facilities Plan by articulating that that investment needs to be related to. New facilities, either land acquisition or amenities, uh and the expansion of your. Uh parks and recreation offerings to new development, so. Um again, the idea is to create flexibility and allow the uh city. To uh build infrastructure, new parks and recreation infrastructure. Uh as the needs of your residents change over the next um five to ten years relative to that, so. Uh again, for parks and trails, we focus on that value of that of investment that's needed in the future. For police and fire, uh we we focus more on, again, the call for service level of service and the. Square footage uh available to process those calls for service, so what? What infrastructure do we have right now to handle the call volume that that is available? Or or uh uh seen in the system? We then perpetuate that square footage level of service based on the projected calls for service. And determine how how much additional square footage is needed uh to maintain the level of service, so. For both uh police and fire, we've calculated that. Uh for police, it's about nine thousand square feet of additional um building square footage. Uh relative to the calls that are projected in the planning horizon, uh we then. Uh allocate the percentages that that is as applicable to new development based on the calls for service. Uh so based on our call volume, we've evaluated uh that for both police and fire. And then for file to included apparatus, uh based on your existing apparatus count per call, say, okay, based on our call volume. What's the additional apparatus investment that will be needed um and projecting that into the future? Uh so here, uh that identifies the cost assumptions associated with that. And uh the projected um future cost based on some inflation.
On the new police facility, it has the year as twenty twenty-three.
Yes. So that was a um an assumption based on some uncertainty with regards to timing of the future facility. So when we had discussed, when we started this process, that. That uh we would like to see that in the in the near term, that basically we're at capacity with regards to police space. So we we show that as being immediate, ne- needing that immediately and the IFFP. If that were to be delayed, then there may be some potential additional inflationary costs that that would would need to be accounted for in the study, so right now. Uh we don't have a whole lot of inflationary uh costs, uh we had a base year of twenty twenty-two. So I had a year of inflation baked into that at the time that we we started this. Essentially, what we're saying is that needs to happen. Soon, immediately, that they're they're at capacity, need some additional square footage in the i- in the IFFP.
So I'm not sure if my question's for you, for Denise or Chief Maxfield, but. Looking at the cost for and the cost anticipate. Bottom line, new fire apparatus, the amount anticipated for new fire apparatus from new development. When you talk about current levels of service, I'm I'm curious, do we currently have a balance in there right now when we purchased, when we acquired the the tiller truck? Were, do we have any impact fee funds available that were? That we could use towards that, do we have a negative balance in the impact fees that have been collected for that? Are we cons? Do the current impact fees collected in the balances have any weight into what those? Uh proposed fees would be, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Much coming out, but hopefully.
No, that makes a lot of sense, cuz that's a uh often a consideration in the determination of impact fees and. And um there's a disconnect between how impact fees are accounted for. At the municipal level and the calculation of the impact fees. What's important to think about when we talk about impact fee fund balances, both positive and negative. Is the impact fee needs to be proportionate to the demand, so. If I am projecting future growth and saying, here's the impact they have on your system based on your existing level of service. The current impact fee fund balance is somewhat irrelevant, because we're saying this is your impact on the system, not. Not a consideration of what prior impact was relative to revenues collected and expenses. Um or uh uh the credits and debiting of your impact fee fund balance. This is your impact, and based on the level of service, this is what you need to pay new development to maintain that level of service. Now, there may be a negative uh impact fee fund balance, and that, there may be a consideration there depending on if that's. Re- representation of excess capacity within the system, meaning. The general fund front and some money to. Um the general fund front and some money to build infrastructure that now is considered a buy-in, that's. That's different, that that's part of the calculation would be considered, but if it's a matter of timing of revenues and um. That's that's something that we have to separate potentially from the calculation of the future impact fee. Um for so for example, take public safety, if um. If we say that the public safety facility or sorry, the police facilities are at capacity. And therefore we need new infrastructure and yet the impact fee fund balance is negative from an accounting perspective. Well, those are at odds with each other, right? We we're at capacity, so new development needs to expand and build new infrastructure. And that's the basis for their impact fee. They shouldn't pay back. A deficit for old infrastructure or accounting process that's. Um your impact fee fund balance because those two are not related to each other. That would suggest here on this side, the deficit is a a relationship of. The previous study and potentially an incorrect calculation and expenditures and new development should not have to pay for that. That um imbalance.
Yeah, a- and I guess my question is, are we penalized if in the past? We we had lower impact fees than we should have and consequently, we're not able to collect what was needed, but because we've not charged. Those sort of bit. I I think you kind of answered it already, but I want to make sure I understand, you're looking at the system of the. You're not you're not considering what the prior impact fees were when the calculations are being performed. You're looking at what is the need of the system of the whole as of today, so we're not going to be penalized for. Prior miscalculations on impact fees. I'm I'm especially worried about this when it comes to water because I know last time we went through this in twenty seventeen. Um the council actually lowered what was proposed, I think that hurt us and I'm worried that we're gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, so.
We're not going to be negatively impacted because we were inaccurate with the adopted.
Yes, it's a double-edged sword in in some respects, so but you're right that um the impact yet considers the proportion allocation. Allocation based on the current level of service and if if there were adjustments, policy considerations in the past that. Um harmed the facility or the city relative to the collection of funds. New development cannot cannot be um burdened with that uh that policy decision now.
So the follow-up part would be if there's a desire of the council to. Clean up the balance sheet for somebody's impact fees that we don't anticipate will ever be able to collect and bring back to zero. That's a separate process by which we'll say, you know what, we're gonna forgive that, pay it out of the general fund to bring the impact fee.
Yeah, so yeah, we've had some of that.
Going up and down.
Yeah, so we've had that discussion internally, that where we could make consideration with regards to impact fee fund balances, we've tried to do that. In other instances, we've said, hey, that that's a problem that new development doesn't need to remedy or should not remedy. And so we need to address that.
I agree, I just want a level co- comfort that it wouldn't be perpetuated. It doesn't need to remedy, uh it shouldn't remedy, but I I just didn't wanna come on and make sure it would be perpetuated.
Yes, now on the flip side, we've been talking about a negative balance. If there's a positive fund balance, the same applies. That new development does not benefit from a positive fund balance because that has nothing to do with them. Um that impact fee fund balance often goes for the construction of infrastructure that's no longer identified in the impact fee facilities plan. It may not yet be constructed, right? So we have infrastructure that was identified. It still needs to be constructed, those impact fees are gonna go towards that. We're identifying new infrastructure and new uh impacts associated with future growth and they're going to pay for that. Now, in some instances, there there is a a need to um to bring that impact fee fund balance. Positive impact fee fund balance in play because there's some uh infrastructure that's on both studies and we do that, so we'll. We'll make sure to account for that. Um the other important element with regards to positive fund balances to to remember is. Again, that buy-in component, you may have a positive fund balance because there's. Buy into infrastructure that's already been paid for and not accounted for in the balance that needs to be. Uh pushed off, said, hey, we need to expend those funds as the buying component and not give that as a credit to new development to offset their. Their impact fee because that's disproportionate, we do not wanna do that. So uh again, we've had those discussions with staff and looked at the bu- fund balances, the outstanding debt. Um and balances associated with outstanding debt and made sure to uh address those considerations relative to to what you've talked about. Alrighty, uh now with regards to the process, again, going back to those six steps, this is the future facilities. Or that previous slide was the future facilities that were uh were required and future investment required. Now it's the final step of bringing that into the proportion of share analysis and calculating the fee. So for parks and recreation, we take that value per capita and apply that. To uh the demand unit, which is our households. Um we look at the average household size and calculate the fee based on that uh that data, so uh the persons per household. Uh for single family in West Jordan is three point four three and multifamily is two point seven one. We take that value per capita and apply that to those household units, uh there there's average household size and get the fee. Of four thousand four hundred twenty-three for single family and three thousand four hundred ninety-nine for multifamily. Compared to your existing fees, those are going up, so we are seeing an increase from uh for single family, you can see it's going from thirty-two hundreds. Uh up to the forty-four hundred and some change. Uh similarly, we're seeing an increase in the multifamily, those percentage increases are not uh the same. Uh the variables that influence or the household's size number often changes from year to year as well. Those averages will change. Based on census data, so. Uh that's the proportion share analysis for parks and recreation, as we look at public safety on the next two slides uh for fire. Uh here we've allocated um based on the um. Existing facilities and future facilities, we've allocated that based on a fair share allocation, meaning. Um in essence, your existing uh footprint, your fire service footprint. Uh as well as this future uh facilities benefit both existing and future development. So men uh many entities across the state use this methodology, which is a a fair share approach. Again, this wh- what this does is it allocates both existing and future facilities equally to both existing and and new development. It's saying that um uh the the facilities benefit uh benefit both existing and new development. That's the same with the apparatus, we allocate the existing investment and the future uh apparatus to our. Uh existing and future development, uh and so then it's averaged, that cost is averaged between that. Existing facility and future uh facility cost. That produces the uh cost per call uh shown in the in the first table there, the residential cost and the non-residential cost. Again, you can see the the big difference between the residential and non-residential based on the allocation of the apparatus to the non-residential variable only. That produces the fees uh shown in the second table there. Um going from a single-family residential fee predwelling of thirty-three dollars now to a proposed of two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Uh so um even with that fair share allocation, we are seeing a a big jump in the. Uh impact fees for fire and you'll see the same uh jump for, not not the same percentage jump, but a similar uh increase. Um uh a- as we look at the the police side of the equation. Um really what's driving this is the inclusion of that future facility and the. Um fair share allocation of saying, hey, we uh new new development benefits from existing. Stations and apparatus and they also benefit from the the future facilities, and so we're going to allocate both of those variables. Uh in this in this calculation, so yeah.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around. Why the the non-residential? The the I I guess my question, then the non-residential pays for apparatus and the residential does not.
Yes, yeah, so that statute requires that if we include apparatus, it can only be assessed to non-residential development.
That's, thank you, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I heard that right. Okay.
Yes. So um yeah, we don't have this issue with with police because we're not allowed to include uh equipment, even though. Really, on the police side, there's a substantial cost associated with apparatus or or equipment with patrol vehicles, but. We do not include that on that side.
What if we went with bigger vehicles for police?
It does specifically call out fire apparatus, so we'd have to expand the definition of public safety facilities to include. Uh police patrol vehicles potentially, so.
Just going with like a five hundred thousand dollar supercar for. Threshold, but we still couldn't call impact fees for that.
I I guess if we called uh police patrol vehicles fire apparatus, yeah.
Chief Waltine now gets to drive one of those big red trucks, Derek.
Every every officer is now driving a fire truck.
Does this is just the fire trucks or is this the ambulances as well?
It's a fire apparatus over five hundred thousands, right now we're just looking at um.
Sorry, just make.
Yes, but I I guess as we, you know, we we've been joking a little bit about the the nuances associated with the impact fee act. Uh a- as we look at the actual cost impact, um. Some of the unintended consequences of legislative changes, the impact on your existing residents, right? If we. We can't assess a cost to new development without showing that the existing residents have borne a similar cost. So um that's that's the important element when we're determining impact fees, the nexus. Between cost born in the past and cost born in the future, and if we wanna try to to augment the cost born in the future, we have to. Bring up the level of service, the cost born by existing residents to that same level of service. So that's the double-edged sword of impact fees and level of service that that you need to be. Uh always in the back of your mind, thinking about, you know, how do existing residents maintain that same level of service? Now, they may already bear that now, so. Alrighty, uh with regards to the police, here we're looking at um again, our. Uh existing facilities at capacity, bringing in that uh future facility cost. Um that trickling down to the calculation of the fee for uh residential and non-residential. You can see that those fees are also going up. Uh with the single-family residential from going from one ninety-two up to three seventy-one. And uh our other fees going up as well, so. Um here, this is uh basically a the the result of including that future facility cost. And um showing that as the basis for the impact fee rather than the. Uh the buy-in to existing infrastructure, so we're we're now going through a. We need to construct new facilities for for police. Uh what also changes uh over time for police and fire is the calls per unit. Um that uh speaks to that discussion we had with regards to the changing nature of. Of um the level of service uh and the call volumes associated with the different land use types. Often as com- as entities um experience more commercial, more robust, commercial growth. The call ratios in those categories go up and that fee uh leads to a higher impact fee for the non-residential. Uh developments uh within a community. Uh but here, this is based on uh uh existing calls for service and allocating those to the specific land use types. I will point out um with regards to public safety, while these are uh. Uh can be perceived as big increases from a percentage basis or uh relative to prior impact fees. When you look at impact fees on the whole, typically, public safety is the lower. Uh or the lowest impact fees on a dollar basis, meaning many of the other impact fees exceed a thousand dollars. Uh per unit, um uh whereas public safety is often often much lower. Uh when when compared to to your other fees, just looking at park impact fees, for example. That is projected at forty-four hundred, compared to these fees, they're they're not as, the public safety is just not as as large of a fee.
So I have a question in regards to parks because. I would have anticipated that for multifamily units that. You would use the parks more because you wouldn't have your own open space as much. But yet our fee for that is less for multifamily, but when we get to public safety, it's more, so can you help me understand?
Yes, yeah, so here it's the demand variable that we have available, so for. Pu- uh public safety, we have the specific calls and can geocodose on a map and overlay that with land use and say, okay, here are the calls. Uh by location and here are the properties that are at that location and we can join all of that data. What we do not have for parks and recreation, for example, is we don't have a ticket counter, a fence around parks, so to say. You know, who's coming and going and where do you live? Um often that that comes up with regards to who's visiting a a um. A park facility and many um entities will say, well, we would think that. Um multifamily would use that more. Um without a detailed study with regards to that, it's challenging to to say, yes, that is happening rather than saying that's. Anecdotal evidence, right?
And why aren't they equal?
What's that?
I- if we don't know, then why aren't they?
Then we we default to what we do know, which is household size and population, you know, so we say, okay. Um but the census data does show that on a per-unit basis, as multifamily. Does have a lower average household size, and so we'll use that variable, recognizing that. When you look at a multifamily development, they have much more units, on the whole, they're paying quite a bit more. In total impact fees for, you know, on a per-acre basis or other variables, but on a per-unit basis, we adjust it for that household size.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the rationale there.
That's what I was gonna say is that if you took a, if you took a multifamily. Um unit that was ten units per acre, then it's ten times that impact fee. Where if it's a quarter acre, there's only four. So the so th- there would be a substantial bit, you know, on that the on that impact on that acreage, they'd actually be paying. Two and a half times more of the impact than houses would because of the number of units. So it it kinda makes.
I think we just need to start figuring out who uses the parts, like we have police and fire, that'd work. I'm teasing.
I'm not teasing when I say if we were to ask Quinn to do that, he could figure it out, I'm sure he could.
Yeah, and often there are surveys with regards to utilization and um that could be a variable that influences future studies.
Can you quickly explain, I I didn't notice in the packet, but is there something that explains what this professional expense is? That we anticipate will lead nine thousand.
That's that's the expense that Corb- uh I think it was Corbin, yeah, oh, he's not here, reference with regards to allocating the cost to do the study. So we we include that in there and recoup that as a as an impact fee eligible expense.
Gotcha. A dollar per call.
Yep, yeah.
So that uh.
Yeah, sorry.
And I didn't see any comparisons. How, I'm a, I don't, I I I just trying to get, wrap my hands around this. How does this, how do these numbers compare with? I mean, I know it's apples and oranges, but how do these numbers compare with the the impact fees in other cities?
Are you asking the proposals? Is that what you're looking at? Okay.
Yeah, I did not, I did not include any comparisons in the presentation, but they are comparable, so South Jordan. Um I'd have to check if you're higher, low uh lower, but you're comparable with South Jordan and many communities. Um uh that have recently updated impact fee studies, so. Uh many of the entities, I'm staying with regards to park impact fees are exceeding the four thousand dollar mark. For a single-family residential and seeing these types of public safety impact fees. And that's primarily driven by the uh just some of the impacts of inflation and. Um land costs within the state of Utah have pushed up uh these impact fees. So again, I I don't have the comps there, but just based on my experience, these are uh very comparable. Uh to to many communities along the Wasatch Front. I've done a lot of the the sta- the studies of that um some of your neighbors have adopted recently. Alrighty, um uh with regards to the process, where we go from here, so the next couple of slides. Um I think we've addressed that, so uh next steps, um. Again, as was mentioned, these are draft documents, so we have the ability to make changes as needed. And we will continue to uh keep this as draft documents until we get to the public hearing phase. Um the uh intent is to hold a public hearing on September twenty-seventh, so. Uh moving backward from that, we're looking at completing noticing by September eighteenth, uh yeah.
So my concern on that is if we do September twenty-seventh, that puts us in a new year with the new council to adopt. And having to rehash a lot of, potentially having to rehash a lot of what we're going through this evening. And having to rehash a lot of, potentially having to rehash a lot of what we're going through this evening.
No, we would adopt it now and it takes effect ninety days after.
Okay.
There would, yes, there would be no no further action required if you adopted on September twenty seven.
Okay, gotcha, my understanding was reversed then that it. We could say we have an intent to adopt September twenty seventh, it opens up a ninety day window and then it has to finally be, okay.
Oh, yes.
Gotcha, okay. I feel better about that one.
Yeah.
Still not feeling so great about some of the other things, but.
Yeah, and uh, this is the recommendation uh as a visitor staff with regards to holding the public hearing, but obviously it's. As we work through um a a work session with regards to utilities on Sept- September twentieth, you may say. Uh, w- we wanna push that on for you, you know, that's up to you as a legislative body to determine. The exact date of the public hearing and when you're ready to adopt, modify or reject, but. Uh, assuming we hold a public hearing uh on the twenty seventh, then we would need to complete the noticing on September eighteenth. Uh, in order to meet the ten day notice requirement.
So if we're talking about you, public utilities on the twentieth, we we require ten day noticing. It was the intention that the September twenty seventh would be the public hearing for all five?
That was the intent, yes.
Is that the council's not gonna hear it till this till September twentieth? For the for the utilities, then we're we're publishing intent before the council, before the council hears that, is that right?
That's that is what would be required to hit the twenty seventh.
Certainly.
You can notice and hold the public hearing on the twenty seventh, but not adopt if there's still questions remaining or, you know, things you wanna consider. Have the have the work session on the twentieth, with it noticed prior to the twentieth. Where you'll hold the public hearing if you wish, and then is there, if there's still matters to consider, pick those up after the twenty seventh.
I guess that's no different from a land use request from a developer where they bring it to us, we hear it, we. Potentially decide the same night, here we're just a little bit ahead of the game because we're having the conversation before. Okay.
The only uh, just in my experience, the only issues I've seen arise is if there are changes. So if we present information and for some reason there's a change to the documentation, meaning we we go back and modify. The study itself, which produces an alternative outcome. Then there's some concern from the development community with regards to timing, now you would have completed all the requirements, so I'm not saying there's. Uh, this where legal may need to weigh in, but. Technically, they would have been a part of the noticing and public hearing and would know. Of potential changes and the um potential delay with regards to adoption. All of that would be known and part of the public hearing process, I just witnessed concern if there are changes. And uh development community wanting the entities to renotice and go through the public hearing process again. Uh, just to be completely transparent and above board relative to some of that information, so. That's just something to think about and and as we move forward.
So as as long as. This council, cause obviously we're in election season, as long as this council. Votes to. Uh, whatever we do on these impact fees, assuming we vote to increase them. As long as we do that before December thirty first, it takes effect and that, but the effective date is ninety days. After the day we pass it.
Correct, yes, so you they they become effective. Uh, the 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 action item is the public hearing. And then that ninety day wait period happens without further action and they become effective without further action.
Yeah, a- and that's the part that I was misunderstanding, I thought we had to hold it like a ninety day window where developers. Yeah, where developers come could come and argue and say this is why. Yeah, so. September twenty seventh would be the public hearing where they could come and talk to it, so I.
Yeah. Yeah, the developers actually with regards to challenge of impact fees, they. The ninety day wait period is irrelevant, they can challenge impact fees, that no requirements in the statute. Or or uh clarification in the statute with regards to challenging impact fees, this is this is more procedural. And ensuring that any increases, there's that ninety day wait period be- before it becomes effective, but, so.
So, uh, I I just wanna kind of. Because of the step that allows for alternative funding for impact. If if we chose. As we're working with developers and we establish the policy, let's say on larger developments fifty acres. Or bigger or a certain value or whatever, if we chose to do. We could, we could substitute, for example, a public infrastructure district for impact fees, in lieu of impact fees. Use the P I D to help fund and offset the the impacts of the development, is is that what I'm hearing?
There are, yeah, there are tools that can be utilized and the establishment of impact fees does not pro. Prohibit use of those tools, what would need to happen is the consideration of. Of impact, you know, so if we if we provide a uh an impact fee credit, or meaning. You as a legislative body or administration provides an impact fee credit or waiving of impact fees. What is the impact of that on your level of service and existing residents and how are you going to make that up? That's the key for impact fees.
Okay.
If you reduce impact fees or waive them, that level of service is still there and needs to be maintained. And so you have to identify that fu- that alternative funding mechanism. The the evaluation of those alternative funding mechanisms will have separate policies and considerations. That may make this more or less advantageous relative to the the project that you're considering.
I'm I'm just suggesting to the council that, a- and we've done one P I D. Um, at least I think we have, haven't we, i- i- didn't we do that one out for a third cadence? Um, but I'm suggesting that maybe in some regards. We ought to discuss a policy of potential P I Ds. As a re- as a replacement of impact for certain developments, just because. The nice thing about a P I D is that it provides all the money upfront instead of piecemeal over twenty five years in a development. And you get that money, and even in a lot of commercial development, because they go out and get a bond, I see your. They go out and get a bond for the, they go out and get a bond and then they pay for the the infrastructure. And then it gets paid back over time instead of paying into the infrastructure district and collect. And having an aggregate of money that you can spend, so it's kinda reversed, but. On some commercial developments, it may be more advantageous for the business to. Um, use the P I D because they can, they can do some bond financing that actually gives them better credit. Uh, so a- as we, as we talk about this. I would like to to see some stuff come back, so we can, maybe we can talk about that better because. I I give you the exa- here's the example that I that I see. And and you know, and and the P I Ds can be paid off the other other ways besides. Um, property tax, it can be building permit costs or some other things. Um, but I look at, I look at Copper Rim at seventy eighth and. West of that, my favorite roundabout in the city. And 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 it's taken how many years to get to the point where we're widening seventy eighth? To handle the traffic from Copper Rim and some of those other things where. If we would have had the P I D, we would have had, we could have said, that's part of the impact, pay for that infrastructure. We can help offset those costs, other developments like Bowman's Arrow would have been able to offset those costs. But that P I D then has the money, we update, we fix the road. Before we have the impacts, instead of after the impacts, and 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 we hear that from our residents. You guys build, but you never consider the traffic. You guys build, but you never considered X or Y. And then the residents bear the burden until we catch up. I would, I would like to see us look at P I Ds. Or other mechanisms so that we can fix the impacts. At bef- before or at the time it's being built, so we don't have to catch up. And the residents don't suffer as much like they do on seventy eighth between fifty six and sixty four, so. That's just, it's a, it's a thought, it's, there's no action to be on that, but. Uh, Corbin, uh, you know, maybe we can take a look at some of those kind of things and just. Look at the crea- uh, become, instead of just, everything's taken care of by impact fees. With blinders on, we look at some of these other mechanisms to handle, you know. That like like was mentioned, developer agreements, P I Ds, tax increment fine, I mean, I I. I just wanna be creative so that we can help offset the impacts. You know, if we look at the impacts of Jones Ranch, we're gonna be collecting impact fees for. The next twenty years on it. What we need, where there's gonna be a point in time where we're gonna need the fire station and we're collecting impact fees, and so we're either gonna bond. And then use impact fees to pay for it or those kind of. But it becomes a chicken and egg thing, but can we, can we look at some other things that, okay. We're to the point we need to build the fire station and how do we do that without waiting for impact fees for another twenty five years, you know where I'm going?
I wouldn't be opposed to the conversation, but I'm also wondering how. Uh, connected the spider web would be, because as we're looking at allowing, if we were to look at allowing some developments to do a P I D. I would think that that would then decrease the total number of uh total amount of revenue that would be needed from impact fees from other communities. And then potentially start messing with fees, so I. I would, I like the idea of doing a kind of area by area as master plans come up, like with Wood Ranch. Where it's been like five years in the process or Copper Rim, which was what, three, four years in the process, I I think. Larger scale developments like that where we can get ahead of it before doing the impact fee analysis would would be the ideal timing, so. Bringing that up here, I think is perfect.
And that that's the um element I wanted to highlight, which is. Uh, some of this is not, i- i- it it doesn't necessarily generate more revenue, it's a shift of how the revenue is generated. And who pays for it, so uh that's what needs often needs to be evaluated with regards to the alternative. Um, revenue resources and financing mechanisms is. What is the consequence of that shift and and who now is paying for that? Um, a- again, impact fees are a mechanism to assess cost to to new development, alternative mechanisms. May also provide a revenue stream, but it will shift, right, and and uh. And impact fees may go down because we've now shifted it to an alternative revenue stream. So uh, assuming impact fees are proportionate, this represents the maximum and now. Any sort of change would be a shift, right, we're shifting the impact away from impact fees to some other sort of financing mechanism. I'll also point out that um. Uh, that financing mechanism does exist uh also outside of P I Ds uh with regards to your ability as a municipality to. Bond finance and uh front load that um uh that in- infrastructure so you can build it now. And then bake that into the impact key calculation and collect that over time, now, impact keys are not utilized as a security for debt, but. Um, you can still finance that infrastructure, build it now, build it up, cost into the impact fee. And pay that back over time as you collect impact fees.
If we were to do something on that, would the anticipated interest incurred on that be. Eligible for payment by.
Yes, yes, so the interest and the cost of issuance is baked into the calculation of the fee. So I have many entities that I work with that we structure in future bond financing and that that is in included in the calculation of the fee. I think my last slide is for question and answer period. I just have this, so that was just clarification. Uh, if there are additional questions, I'm happy to um circle back or uh discuss generally or if you have specific questions. I appreciate your questioning, often I'll go into an impact fee presentation, I get no questions, I'm like, what? It's a pretty big deal, you know, what are the questions?
It is a big deal and and it obviously is a big impact on everything. Um, I wanted to say I appreciate uh the this the presentation, I appreciate how everything was laid out, I appreciate. The packet that we had, it was very easy to follow and understand and to kinda grasp the whole concept of everything and how it's it's working. So I just wanna say thank you for that because it made it, so I don't really have questions, cause I understood what you gave.
Good, thank you.
So with that, I'm going to follow council rules. And I'm going to, where, pursuant to council rule section one oh four, and by the way, if you're. Curious, that's on page six and council rules. I move that this agenda item be moved out of the committee of the whole. To the council meeting on September twenty seventh for public hearing. And further consideration without modification of this document.
I'll second that.
So motion by council member Green, second by council member Bloom. My question to the motion, I don't think we would need to specify. These three items, yeah, they can go across, but we're anticipating adding the other two as well where we haven't yet heard them. That can be done without the motion, so, yeah, I I'm okay with that, I'll be in favor. Alright. With that, Ms. Quick, could you take us through a vote? It's a voice vote, but we have one council member participating. So we.
I can say aye.
Okay, so there's council member Worthing, council member Pack. Council member Bloom.
Oh.
Council member Green.
Aye.
Council member Whitlock.
Aye.
Myself and I, six in favor.
Great, thank you.
I'm gonna move to adjourn.
Motion by council member Green, he almost finished the motion before council member Whitlock got out for second. Again, uh, we will have to go uh person by person since we're electronic. Council member Worthing, you okay for adjourn? She's already bailed, yeah, she's already left, therefore all in favor, aye, can you pose? We stand adjourned.